Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of December 4th, 2003. Before we hit our main agenda, we would like to, I would like to entertain a motion, the signing of the warrant.
Make a motion, we sign the warrant, Mr. Chairman, for November 20, 2023.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Also next on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of our regular scheduled Select Board Meeting of November 20th, 2023.
Make a motion that we sign the minutes for the regular session, November 20, 2023.
We also have two executive session minutes to approve. One was an executive session on November 20th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. Motion to approve that.
I make a motion that we approve the executive session meetings of November 20th, 2023, 5:00 p.m.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. And also one more, November, a motion to approve the minutes of our executive session, November 20th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the executive session, November 20th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m.
Very good.
And I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous, and thank you very much for that. On our agenda too, we do not have any public hearings, but we do have a scheduled appointment. Our appointment is with our police chief, Robert Tazzino, who will be present to recommend two new policies to us. The first is a comfort canine proposal, and the second is a revised beard policy for officers of the Milford Police Department. Chief, and also the other members too of your staff too.
Wow, absolutely.
Officer Pinto and Deputy Chief Sousa. Thank you. So Chief Tazzino, you'd be giving us the first proposal of the canine, which I think is a, is an excellent policy and an excellent idea that you have, a program that you're going to be doing. You know, there's a lot that goes on, of course, as you fellas know, when you do respond to a call, a lot of issues, be it a mental issue with depression or anxiety or some high stress, and that type of situation. And there's nothing like a, a service dog to help out. I mean, sometimes they go above and beyond of what a pet is, you know, and, and, and that's what we're here today for, and I think that's wonderful.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, I'm lucky tonight, I have Deputy Chief Collisous with me and Sergeant Paul Pinto of the Family Services Unit. And this girl here is Piper. And she's a therapy dog that works with us, and we want to take her on board as a member of this, of this department. And what we did here is you have a proposal in front of you, I know you were, you were going to go for it. But just a couple of quick things before we hear from Sergeant Pinto. It was actually kind of fortuitous, in my readings over the past week or two, one of my news feeds, it was actually Elizabeth Zavalia out of the San Antonio Express, it was on November 26th, she wrote and she spoke about the benefit of a therapy dog for children exposed to trauma. And, you know, we, we talk about these things in the abstract until you're trying to mitigate a response and have an interaction of a child that suffered trauma. And that trauma can be watching it domestic from your parents. You know, for those who are lucky enough, I can't speak to that. You know, I, my parents never argued or fought in front of me. But a lot of people have those scars, and have those, more importantly, as, you know, Elizabeth spoke in her writings, they have that barrier to get over and overcome. And then, to be in a situation where you're with judges, attorneys, and other people, well, it really just piles on. A dog like Piper can come in and really break down those barriers, okay? Kind of melt away that shell, and really get to the root of the cause and really break through to that child, okay? You know, for me personally, in the back of an ambulance, people in crisis, the therapy dogs have been invaluable. And that's another thing important, this is a therapy dog. You know, this isn't a tracker, attacker, that, you know, people hear about and they're worried about. This is a therapy dog. And quite interestingly, she's actually hypoallergenic, believe it or not. So people who have dog allergies aren't going to have an allergy issue with Piper. And really kudos to, you know, Sergeant Pinto. This has been a labor of love for him. And this is something that the Milford Police Department and the Milford community, the benefits that we have with the sergeants and supervisors and officers, they do so much on their own for the community, just because they believe in it, you know? Not because they're getting paid extra for it.
Right.
Or, you know, it was actually, it basically came to enough is enough, we said with this. It wasn't Sergeant Pinto, it was me, that enough out of pocket money that he's paying, all the things that he did on his own, let's make this, this intricate piece of the Family Services Unit, let's, let's show her the respect, show him the respect, and make this comfort dog a part of our department. And that's what you see before you. It's really that simple. And I'm sure you know Sergeant Pinto and speak about her and the things he's done with her.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Board, for your time and having us here tonight. Just to digress a little bit, a couple of years ago, when I was a school resource officer, this is when I first got introduced to the idea of a comfort dog. I went to some trainings as an SRO, met some fellow officers in other communities, threw some trainings, and was new to the idea. And that's when I began to learn about the effectiveness in their community and then their schools, and it was blown away. They said it was an incredible asset to their department, their community, and it's been an absolute game changer. I said, geez, let me do some research on it. And that's when it really just kind of hit me, and I started networking with other communities, other SROs across the state, and nothing but positive feedback. I said, what a great idea. So I dove in a little further, I contacted a good friend, a former canine officer from Milford Police Department, Christina Taddy, and she's been instrumental in this process. And with her gracious heart, she's donated Piper, she's donated the training, and she donates all the grooming for Piper.
That's fantastic.
So I've been working with her hand in hand. I had reached out to her initially just to pick her brain, because she works very closely with service dogs. She's a lead trainer with BASK, Balance and Service Canines. She has her own training facility, Alpha Canine, and her own grooming. So she's been incredible and very generous. And of course, you know, her roots are Milford, and she was nothing but gracious. So it's evolved into something fantastic. I think it's going to, you know, turn into a very, very positive community relations experience, and I'm excited, and I'm looking forward to it, and what a great asset to the Family Services Unit. Some of these calls that we go to between mental health, like the chief says, some domestic violence, even some of the sensitive cases that we investigate with sensitive crimes with children, very difficult things. There's so many different situational, you know, things that she can apply herself to, courtroom testimony, I mean, like I said, interviews, there's trauma incidents, there's just, there's a lot of positive outcome, and I think, you know, the benefits are, are going to be amazing.
I think, I think you're restricted only by your imagination of what you can, what you can do with this dog.
Absolutely.
I'll tell you right now, I mean, it's, it's like you said, it's a fantastic benefit, not only to the Milford Police Department, but to the community itself, very unique too. I mean, I know a lot of municipalities are getting involved in this, but we seem to be right up there with them as well.
Absolutely, yeah. It's very forward-thinking, I think, I mean, there's nothing in order for some community members to kind of shy away or a little, you know, question, mother and I, you should engage with an officer. Well, I mean, what better asset to have with a dog with this kind of temperament and, and, you know, trained and to engage? I mean, children, all people, all walks of life will engage with me because of her.
Of her, yeah. I can see that. Very good.
I, I think it's, I know, I had a conversation with Paul over the weekend, I can't say enough good things about everything I read, everything Paul and I discussed. I think it's fantastic. I think if you just, for the moment, you know, the dog has the vest, and yes, it has a Milford Police patch on it, but the interesting thing is it says "therapy dog," but it says, please, you know, pat me.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, as opposed to a canine, which is trained for a different purpose, this is an encouragement. And I can cite cases over the years where we've dealt with particularly adults with autism, dementia, where this dog would have been invaluable. And it was only the kindness of the officers themselves that showed, it showed through their uniforms, because, you know, the uniform, as much as it presents, I'm here to help you, it presents they are law enforcement officers, and that's a part of their, you know, occupational requirements. But you show up with a dog like this, and I just think it's truly awesome. As far as Christina Taddy, Christina's fantastic, phenomenal trainer, knows canines. I rescued a German Shepherd that, to save that dog's life from a small farm in Maine. The owner was, he had cancer, he was dying, and that dog was absolutely untrained, and Christina worked with me to build training into the dog so I could adopt it back out. And I only raise that to show her skill level. It's phenomenal. This dog, the, the skill level on this dog is awesome, as I was coming in the door tonight, I had a few moments with the dog, and I'm okay if the dog comes and testifies in hearings in court. I, I speak a language this dog understands now, so we're going to get along just fine. But, you know, this animal, this dog, is the kindest, gentlest thing you're ever going to meet. I think the policy is thorough, there are some changes that I did provide to Sergeant Pinto and Deputy and the chief, and, and those are more around, and I raise them so that we incorporate them in our decision tonight. And that's, under Field Labor Standards Act, we have to give the dog handler one hour a day of their workday to take care of the dog. It's required by the federal law. Secondarily, we have to indemnify him. That dog is going to be living at his home. You can have the most gentle human being, you can have the most kind human being, same with the dog, you know, but you poke me in the eye and something could go just a little amiss, and we have an obligation. We're taking this dog on as property, because dogs are property. So we're taking the dog on as property for the town, so it would be no longer appalled at some point if the dog isn't functioning within the department, as I've done in other departments, that I manage you, sell it to the handler for $1. Don't expect the dollar to land on our table, but just make sure you have a good solid contract. I, I think this is the right way to go. I, this isn't a tracking dog. This isn't a dog that's going to go and find a lost kid. This is a dog that's going to save a kid who, for these moments in their own home, for these moments in their own head, they're lost. This is, this is the dog that's going to allow that young person, that elder dementia, to be able to vocalize how they can help them, how firefighters can help them, how paramedics can help them. I, I mean, I read this proposal with excitement, and then, when I ever talked to Paul Pinto, and he told me that he was already training this dog, and sending me pictures and just the knowledge, I, I don't know how we could ever say no. Because I think every single way, every step in looking at this, the positives are so great. It's yes, 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 yes. And then, as I said, walking in the door, and Paul says, well, you know, Christina trains these dogs, as you mentioned, you know, as balanced dogs. Well, okay. If anybody wants to be a new customer, I think I do. I asked, I asked the chief, do you think that dog would pick me up off the floor? But I, I know where they've been in challenging situations with people, and through their own experiences, their own knowledge, they've made a huge difference in people's lives. And I think this is just a, another huge step forward. I, I would encourage the Board to accept this. You know, we know we have to indemnify him, it's our dog, so we'll have to provide him to show that we have insurance, or he'll lose his homeowner's insurance because he's housing someone else's dog. That's not uncommon with canines, you know? When I was at the Transit Police, I had more than 20 dogs that worked for that department, and we had to do the same thing. So bomb dogs and canines and the rest of it. So you had to do the same things to protect the officer's personal interest, but also to allow them to go forward professionally in making this dog a huge asset for us. And I know I took a lot of time, I just, it's, it's something that I do have a lot of knowledge in, and I did discuss these gentlemen to make sure. So I welcome my colleagues to speak, and then from there, I'll make a motion.
Sure. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I used an example this evening when I first walked in and, you know, saw you three fine gentlemen, said hello to all of you, but, you know, the attention went to Piper. Piper got up, you know, greeted me as well, and, you know, from a personal standpoint, everything in your head that's spinning through your head all of a sudden is, and, you know, and the focus is, is Piper as I am to her. And, and that's key. And in your report, you put, interacting with a comfort dog can lessen the enormous emotional weight that people experience. People that are going through issues with mental illness, in a lot of cases or in all cases, feel that they're bad people, and they're not. They're people that are dealing with a sickness, and, and having a service dog like this that can break that barrier down so that you can work with them and say, no, you're not a bad person, you know? And Chief, you said it 100 times, you're a sick person looking to get better. And that's what, you know, that's what, you know, Piper can do, is break those barriers down to give, you know, the Milford Police Department the opportunity to get somebody level enough to, you know, say, listen, we're going to transport you to the hospital, whatever it is, we're going to get you the help you need. But the service dog, you know, service animal can help you do that. And if you, you know, I know you gentlemen do, you watch the news, they just put a brand new golden retriever, a Tufts Medical Center to work with children, you know, the same thing, traumatic experiences, and, and there's something about an animal that, you know, that can do that. And, you know, I, I take my hat off to you, you know, to, to think of it and to put it into, into place, you know? And it's just another important tool, you know, to, to get us where we have to get, you know? Because, you know, again, there, there are people, and, and thank God we have people like you that are willing to, to help, you know, because they're not bad people. They're not, you know, they're not. And Christina, I mean, God love her, been around forever, she definitely knows how to train animals.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, you know, so I think it's a great thing, I support you 100%. I thank you for taking it on, you didn't have to, you know? And the chief hit the nail right on the head, it's not because you're getting paid to do it, getting paid extra to do it. And I said tonight, when I came in, the comments that I'm getting from the public about, you know, what's going on is just, you know, and it's not because you're getting paid, it's because of the love of the community and the love of what you do.
Absolutely.
Again, I just want to say thank you. So, great job, thank you, thank you.
Excellent job. And like I said, it's, what that does is beyond what a pet does, you know? It's a pet, but also above and beyond that as well. Anyway, and thank you for all that you do for us. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the policy.
I make a motion that we approve the policy with the amendments related to ownership as well as handler, and lastly, the town's responsibility that this particular dog is becoming an asset of the town, and that we have an obligation liability-wise as well as financially. The finances, as was laid out in the, you know, Paul has gone a mile, so people understand we're talking about a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's it. And thanks to all those companies who did help us out.
That includes the value of this dog, because they have value, and the training, and food, and the rest of it, and Paul's reached out, and the number of donations that he sought and received is commendable.
Sure is.
To include veterinary services, you know, it can be very, very costly. So I commend you, I, I think you've done a superb job. So I make a motion that we accept the proposal as well as the policy as presented by the chief, along with the amendments that I provided to him concerning.
Mm-hmm. And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make, make that unanimous. What other good thing was too?
Thank you very much.
Like you've put in your proposal too, perhaps maybe a thousand dollars for startup costs and a $500 per year, that's a bargain.
He's really gone above and beyond.
Sure you have.
The donations and, you know, the public, you know, looks for Piper now. I've had interaction with people at the hospital, they're like, hey, is Piper on? I'm like, no, she's not here, they're like, oh, you know? So it's really just made a huge difference in people's lives.
Sure has.
You know, enriching people's lives, especially someone who's going through a hard time.
Yep.
You know?
Nothing like it. Anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Paul, Paul, if you want, Paul, I don't know if the cameras pick up on.
Yeah, I could put her down right in front of the Board if you'd like.
I, I'd love it.
Just looking at her makes me want to relax.
That's what I mean, that's the effect it has.
Yeah, yeah, really.
So they have a sense of what a great animal this is.
Stay.
And.
Stay. I'm right here. Stay.
And if he tells her to be nice to people, she comes right over and she was looking at my hand, which is incredible.
Got her eyes on him for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not as nervous around her as I am the other canines.
You got a point there.
You don't want to scratch your head around them, you don't want to make a quick move.
There you go.
I think she's going to be, but on a rainy day or a wet snowy day, you better get out the blow dryer because she's going to soak it up. But Paul, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very, very much.
Same to you, Deputy Sousa and the chief. I, I can't be more happy for you. As far as the beard goes, I think Piper's in conformance, so.
Yeah.
I think we can get past this one fairly quick.
That's what we were checking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next, Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief, where the hell is my head? You're the Deputy Chief.
I can let him present it there.
No, there's Sousa, yes, because I thought he was going to do it. Okay. But anyway, Chief Tazzino, you also have another policy.
Yeah.
Three guys without beards.
You got a beard policy.
So this is actually, this actually was brought to me by a couple members and a couple former military guys. And when it comes to facial hair, I really stay in touch with the trends that come out of the biggest police department in the country, NYPD. And we know how long I've been associated with them. Beards are allowed on police departments. And, you know, in July 26th of 2022, Charlie Baker enacted the Crown Act. And so, so much has changed with the way officers wear their hair, what people are allowed to wear at work, you know, what's comfortable for people. And a lot of times, it goes back to religion, their ethnic base, and it's just something that I've researched at the behest, you know, this wasn't my idea, I'll be honest, that was from the rank and file. And, you know, I took a long look at it, I spoke with the deputy, and we looked at it, and it's really just bringing us up to the times with other agencies and other departments. It doesn't make any sense to not allow people to wear beards that are well-kept and in good order, and that policy says that, it clearly spells it out. And, you know, when it comes to, we've raised a lot of money through the years of No Shave November, and people have actually called me, like, what are you going to do with it now? And I said to everybody, it was real simple, to keep your beard, you're going to have to donate in the month of November. This year, you know, the Milford Police Department raised over $4,000 for somebody with cancer as part of the No Shave. So we're going to be doing it backwards in Milford. To keep your facial hair in November, you're going to have to donate, you're right, or you have to shave in November. So just kind of a play on the, on the program. But yeah, I just think it's, it's changing with the times and kind of getting us in line with really what's more appropriate than, you know, having to shave all the time and...
Especially today, Chief, you know, where the, like you mentioned, people have that religious aspect of it and the cultural aspect of it as well, that they require a beard of some sort.
Sure.
You know?
In certain times of the year, there, there are actually certain officers that work for us that, because of their cultural background, they would prefer to have a beard. And, you know, currently it prohibits them. And I think this is just getting us in line with the times, kind of like the next step.
We did it back in 2004, I think, we raised the funds, the officers wanted to have the beards, and we did it as a side letter in the contract, and we raised the funds for a little boy who lived on South Main Street who needed a motorized wheelchair. And the police officers in this department, just to allow them to grow a beard, they went and raised, they went out every single day and, you know, they raised the funds for that little kid to be able to go out and enjoy playgrounds with other kids and a lot of other things. I, so I applaud this, this policy and the chief's, you know, venture back into it for two reasons. One, they do raise monies, and it was on the news just this past week, the No Shave November, and I think it was actually the Transit Police Department that raised the most money, it was like $40,000, which is pretty phenomenal. But when you take the police departments across the state, they, they raise a lot, a lot of money to help other people to do good things. So I encourage that. I do respect the fact that, not only religiously, but otherwise, some people prefer to have a beard, and my fear Irish skin doesn't allow, you know, so I don't. But I, I don't have a problem, this is a good policy, it deals with well grooming. I think they, they really researched, they did the right thing.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said that you got to stay with the times, you know? And it's very easy to want everybody to look like you, meaning us, but if you're going to attract the, the best talent, you got to be flexible.
Of course.
And you got to set guidelines, which is what you've done, you know, with this policy, you know? It is acceptable, but, you know, you know, this is what we expect from you, it's a two-way street. You know, we're going to allow you to have a beard, but you got to keep it neat and trimmed, and, and by doing that, you know, you will, you will attract, you know, the best people to work in that department, because they're saying to themselves, well, you know what, maybe it's not exactly what I want, but it's, you know, it's acceptable, you know? And I really want to go to work for that department, instead of saying, well, you know what? No, because they, you know, they just won't allow me to do what I want, you know, and they'll end up going somewhere else. And ultimately, having spent as many years as I did in the automobile industry, I saw very talented people go with other manufacturers because they didn't want to, want to wear a white shirt and a red tie and a dark suit and park their car backwards every day, because that's how we do things. That's not how you do things, you know? And, and that's the times we live in. You have to change, you have to be flexible, set the guidelines, set the guidelines, and then, you know, you hear me say it all the time, I say to parents today, you know what? Don't make them go straight through the canal, keep them off the rocks.
Yeah, that's right.
You know? And that's, that's what this policy is, you know?
And we try it at, you know, at the police department, and unfortunately, a lot, I think a lot of employers, regardless if it's police or private industry, you have a responsibility to your employees, you know? You have responsibility to keep morale up, to keep things moving in the right direction, you know? And to be, you know, over the top with stringent rules that a department like the NYPD doesn't hold, why are we doing that? It doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Even though, you know, I don't wear a beard, I could have one by tomorrow if you want me to wear one, I can grow one in Berkeley by noon time. But, you know, that doesn't mean for somebody else, it's not the right fit. And I think with this policy, we've answered that.
Yeah. I think a classic, or I should say, a great example of this is watching the news the other night, and I won't get into it because I don't want it all out, but there was a local professor at a very prestigious college that's doing a class on a very popular performer, and he was so far from me, but when I had the ability to sit down and... performer. And he was so far from me. But when I had the ability to sit down and really listen, he's brilliant. He's brilliant. So just because he doesn't look like me and talk like me, doesn't mean, you know, and that's exactly what this is. He's, you know, the people that take his courses, because what he's gonna do is brilliant, you know. And he doesn't have to look like me and act like me, you know. Can he get his message across? And that's exactly what this is. We want you to come here. We want you to do a good job. We want you to be part of this department, but just meet us halfway.
That's right.
So, and again, I commend all of you, you know. It's a true team effort up there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And it also hits too, Chief, you know, like I was mentioning too, with, you know, your personal appearance and good grooming does reflect on your professional department as well, too. You know what I mean? So that's what this does. It keeps things in check, you know, which I think is great. So what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to approve the revised beard policy for officers of the Milford Police Department.
Make a motion that we accept the proposal as presented by the chief of police.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thanks for your time. And thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very many, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'm trying to be, go easy on you. I got a little cut, so I'm trying to be careful. Don't want to get you, don't want to go blood.
Have you leave her here until the end of the evening?
Leave her there. Yes.
It's my blood.
Yeah, don't worry. Paul's gonna walk.
I got a little cut on my hand, so I'll go easy.
That's fine. Okay, perfect.
Next, Milford Youth Center donations.
Tom, the town administrator.
Oh, yes. Okay, moving right along. Next on the agenda would be the town administrator's report. Ricky?
Just thank you. Two quick items. Just thank you to the members of the Milford Firefighters Association, Highway Surveyor Scott Chris Affoley, Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin, Maintenance Supervisor Jay Vaz, for all their efforts in setting up and assisting during yesterday's Santa Parade. Despite the weather, the parade was enjoyed by many area residents, and we appreciate their efforts. I just want to also alert the board, we've completed two new ADA projects with the money appropriated at past town meetings. First project was to repair the ADA accessible ramp at Memorial Hall. The second was some repairs to the front steps here at Town Hall on Main Street. Again, thank Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin. He is the one that is identifying the projects and also overseeing the implementation of the project. So I want to thank Carlos on those two projects. And that's all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Next on the agenda is old business. Any member of old business?
Yeah, I mean, it comes up, I think, annually. Just if we could take another look at the two poles, you know, the utilities.
Oh, the double poles.
Double poles.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yes. I know I received a complaint on Rosenfeld. Just, I think around town, and it's not solely either the telephone company or.
Right.
It's a matter, you know, electric. It's a matter of coordinating. And sometimes it is cable or one of the others that is delaying it.
I can reach out and get an update on where they're at with it if you have.
Okay, yep. Michael?
I don't have any.
No, business. Ricky, just, just, just to mention too, with under old business, if you have a chance, can you just check to see if there's any progress with the Old Arch Rubber property? Because I remember we were, we more or less got the ball rolling on that. And then we were waiting for one of the owners in New York to get back to us.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Because I know we also all checked the DEP because they did some groundwater analysis too, as you could see the monitoring wells that are there. And from what I understand, it's still ongoing. So to see if they have any results or where we should go from, from there. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is new business. And we do have Milford Youth Center within an acceptance of gifts, which would be from Barbell 88 to the Milford Youth Center in the amount of one thousand eighty-eight dollars. And we would need a vote on that. And like I say, these, we have two as a matter of fact to discuss today and to approve today. And this first one, like I said, a thousand eighty-eight dollars, and the other one's gonna be up there too. You know, the, the committee is, is, is very pleased with the generosity that we have from our businesses throughout our town. They really help out not only the youth center, police fire department, and, and many other departments that we have in town that serve our public. And like I say, you know, hats off to Jen for the, the director for getting these grants and these awards and these donations, which really help out a lot and save the taxpayers a lot of money and let, and the, and the program still continue to help every vulnerable population that's in our town as well. So that really helps out a lot. A motion to accept this?
Make a motion that we accept one thousand eighty-eight dollars as a donation from Andre, the owner of Barbell 88, which is actually located at 28 Hastings Street in Mendon Menace.
Right.
So it shows how regional the youth center is.
Good time.
In drawing in donations. But this is towards the Thanksgiving donation, you know, the services that are provided by the youth center over the Thanksgiving holiday. And we thank Andre and his business for thinking about the Milford Youth Center.
Very good, Tom. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, is another donation that we have from Mike Sores of the New Human Project One to the Milford Youth Center in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars as well. Like I says, Michael, we appreciate again, any, any donation that we have, that we get from these businesses. And it really goes a long way. Really does. Tom?
Make a motion, we accept seven hundred and fifty dollars that was presented by Mike Sores for the new, from the New Human Project One located here in Milford. Those funds are gonna be utilized again towards the Thanksgiving as well as the after-school program and new equipment at the youth center. And again, much appreciated.
Very good. Thanks. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is our invitation to speak. We have a member of our residence, Mr. Harold Rhodes. Good evening to you, Mr. Rhodes.
Gentlemen.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Very good.
Before starting, Rick, I did speak to the folks at MOD. They are very pleased that Milford continues and I think now leads in the commitment to providing ADA funds consistent with the transition plan. And I didn't remember whether it was the fifth or sixth year, but they were.
Fifth, I think, but I'm not sure either. Yeah.
But you can expect, or the town can expect a letter from senior people at, within the state government for recognizing Milford's continued commitment to the ADA books in town.
Great, thank you. It's good news.
It's really, it's really wonderful.
Thank you for that.
Wonderful thing. So, you know, there's, I'm sitting back there, I'm thinking about what to say. And I decided, there's really nothing for me to say. You all, the three of you all know in your mind, I mean, from the materials that have been provided, the pluses and minuses of expanding the select board. The material I provided, Milford remains the largest by population town in all of Massachusetts with a three-person select board. There are at least twenty-five, well, I'll say twenty, I believe it's twenty-five towns that are smaller than Milford that have five-person, five or seven-person select boards. Some of these towns are seven. So, and I sent over the discussion that Milton went through just two years ago. They, you know, they had a three, they're smaller than us. They had a three. They had a community-wide discussion. All the issues, all the pluses, all the minuses were brought forward. And then they voted to increase the size of the board to five persons. You know, and that's not to say that there are, you know, other factors that , you know, come into play when we have five people on a select board. And of course, all of those need, need propriety. And then, you know, what this board feels and what the community feels is, is, you know, the right thing to do. You know, for me, you know, if, if nothing else, what, what we've seen, and I do appreciate all the calls I've gotten from the community, from people concerned about my being Jewish and how I'm being affected, inclusion, inclusion is an important thing. And the more we can include, the better the civil discourse. And if we haven't seen that ever before, that's what's come out of a lot of folks in, in the Jewish community, is that the Jewish community needs to do a better job reaching out. And, you know, that's in our community and our example. I'm sorry for the digression. So what am I asking for? I am simple. It's a simple thing. Sometimes an appropriate meeting in, appropriate select board meeting in January that the select board adds to its agenda and allows people to speak in favor, not in favor, you know, let folks talk about it. And of course, you know, I'm not going to be doing a citizens' petition at all. What I realized is if this is, if this is something that the town wants, it needs to come from the select board. Otherwise, it just won't work. So by having it as a, as a item on the agenda, you can, or we can just talk about it and learn more from what people think. And then if the three of you decide it's a good idea, okay. And if the three of you guys decide it's not a good idea, okay. But we will give it, we will have given it a fair hearing. Okay? That's the important thing, is that the town will have collaborated and provided its input to its select board members to make a decision which, you know, has obvious consequence to the entire town. So if nothing else, that's a really good thing to have an inclusive discussion about the leadership of the town of Milford. And that's it.
Good.
If there are any questions, I mean, I'm sure you guys know, know more than I about this topic. But I hope, I hope that's something we can do in January. Because I mean, I'm not allowed to ask questions, but is this something at all that might be considered?
I'd love to talk about that.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what to answer.
Okay. Andy Harrow, thank you so much for your time. Really, really.
Mike, always good to see you. You know, I came in second with red for, you know, red for select. I, I, I almost beat you.
Okay.
By six hundred points. It was, it was a close race.
Take care.
Thanks, Harrow. Have a good night. Okay. Nobody else for invitation to speak, right? Nothing, nobody on, nothing like that? Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the town administrator.
Yeah, yeah, very simple.
IDC, the vacancy of the Economic Development Commission. And it is a.
Just looking to put the town plan of Larry Duncan back.
The reappointment of Larry Duncan back.
That's all I'm looking to do. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, which is a temporary appointment. And not only that, but what, what better position in, in individual to, to be on that board. So.
Will be temporary.
And it's temporary until we get our own director of economic development. Okay? So everybody read the letter. Everybody knows what the, what Tony Pinter would like. So therefore, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we reappoint the town planner Larry Duncan as our representative on the IDC, EDC, which is presently vacant until such time as we make an alternative decision.
Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Like I says, I think Larry would be, has been a great member, and he would still be now even with his reappointment as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is a memo that we got from Joe Caligione, who's the planning board chair, informing the board that the planning board will be establishing a comprehensive plan subcommittee to develop a draft plan for the full planning board's approval no later than January 2025. And he's asking the select board to consider assigning a representative of the select board as a member of the comprehensive planning committee. And he has a memo to town administrator, Richard Bellani. And he said the planning board will be establishing a comprehensive plan subcommittee to develop a draft plan for the full planning board approval by no later than January 2025. As was in the case with the 2020, 2003 plan, the subcommittee is intended to assure board, but from the key boards in town, as well as provide additional flexibility for the planning consultant to hold public forums. The seven comprehensive plan subcommittee members is as follow. There 'd be three planning board members, one member of the board, the select board, one member of the conservation commission, one member of the finance committee, and the town administrator. Please be advised that the select board, in, in order that we may consider representative to assign to the subcommittee going forward. We hope to finalize the contract and scope of work for the plan in December. Anybody have any comments and concerns or any recommendations who would want to be on this committee as our representative?
I'm already on it, gentlemen.
I know you are. I know you are. Okay.
I need your whole life.
I know.
And you no longer have the police chief search committee.
No, no, we got.
Congratulations. I make a motion that Paul Mazakelli will represent us on the comprehensive plan.
I would gladly second that.
Well, I, and I make that unanimous if I can. But anyway, thank you for your, for the confidence that you have in me.
Your wife will be upset with me.
And I, and I appreciate that.
That military thing, who wants it? And two guys step back.
Yeah, yeah. See, that, sorry, that other Three Stooges, too.
Yes, that's correct.
But anyway, and there is no executive session this evening?
Yeah.
We did that.
You did?
Yeah. You just pointed me.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So then therefore, no other business, no.
Make a motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I would, I'd be second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. And therefore, I wish everybody a good evening and thank you for.